Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're ready to go?
Morning.
Good morning, yes, sir.
Okay. Meeting is, do we have everyone on here?
Yep, they're coming on now.
Okay. Good morning, Shawna.
Morning.
All things in your run to the world?
Same. Same, I can't wait to get to January so like can get back to normal.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, good morning, this is Ms. Birdsong, I do need everyone to, yes, except as a panelist.
Morning, everybody.
Ms. Sepso is here and I'm trying to promote her to panelist as well, good morning.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, and now you, because when you promoted me, things went the heck in a handbasket.
Yeah.
Alright, we have everyone on here?
No, not yet, I'm still looking for.
Two, three, four, and Norris is on five, you said hello, so we got everyone on.
Okay.
Okay, hi folks, thank you, we'll begin today's meeting, as I said before, and thank you very much for accommodating our schedule, it is, you know, we had a family situation and thank you for being accommodating. The second thing is, as I said before, we have, we're only halfway through, this is our last meeting scheduled for this because we are now really up against a timeframe, especially given that Linda, you know, she's got work to do before she is no longer, you know, available and with us, so this is why today is so critical. August, we typically do not have a meeting, so the, I said that we would only deal only with this issue unless there was a very urgent issue before the commission, is there any urgent issue before the commission that we must address? Hearing none, then we will keep moving forward here, okay? Miranda, thank you very much for setting this all up here for us here, I believe we were at what page, eighty? Well, I have, I have mine printed out here, so it was shared requirements of both supervisor and provisional appraiser. That was slide eighty.
Eighty-five.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, so what we'll do is we'll go through here, I've made, I probably have a dozen notes through here, the former coach of UCLA used to say, be quick but don't hurry, so we're gonna be quick, we're not gonna hurry, we're gonna take the appropriate time we need for each one, John, I know you sat in, I only listened to about forty minutes of the presentation earlier this week that you had, you know, you sent out here, there was a section in the later portion, I think we, and then give you the floor and we can talk more about that, that would be the most appropriate portion, so I haven't forgotten you, I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, okay?
Yep.
Alright then, that being said, we go into the next slide, it said shared requirements for both supervisor and provisional appraiser. The only thing I would say on that slide and then open it up, we say both appraisers have provided input, selecting, credentialing pathing, certified residential appraisers qualified to appraise a building containing one to four units and so forth. Then we go, this is the highest level of licensing, we didn't have a line in there for the, you know, the certified general appraiser, this is the highest level of licensing, we need to put that tag in there. Agree? Disagree? I guess everyone's on mute.
Yes.
I think so, I would agree.
Okay, great, okay, so we'll make note of that. I'm sorry, it's making you on by chance? And Linda?
Yes, I'm here, and Linda's here as well.
And Linda's here as well?
Yes.
Great, thank you, so feel free to jump in, okay, so that maybe just got lost in the wash on that one.
Jerry, the only thing.
As I understand it, you're just saying add a line about certified general appraiser.
Yeah, see, we had, we had the certified residential and we talked about, we never put a, a tag and said this is the highest level of licensing. If we looked at that, that would imply that you can, that a certified residential appraiser could apply all properties.
Okay, I have that, add certified general appraiser, okay, very good.
Okay, there was someone who wanted to say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know Linda Sepso, we were talking about this last time, and I went looking for it and I couldn't find it, but I swear it's supposed to be that, where I'm getting it from, that it's one to four family but not specialized residential. Linda, remember that? Linda here?
John, that's more, if you go through left, you'll find that even more defined later in this document.
Alright, I saw that, but I wasn't sure if we're.
It's probably twenty slides down the road here. Okay, where we get into things, and make a note of it though, to make sure we cover it. Okay, shared requirements for both supervising provisional, the next slide here. Anything, anybody have anything to add or subtract? Okay, I didn't either, the next slide. Shared requirements for both supervisory and provisional. Anything to add or subtract? So then we get the next slide Q and A, so I opened it up, any, anything to add what we just went over from the general public or anybody of that section? Staff, anybody? Okay, then we get into complex properties. John, this is where it may start to tag in, you know what I'm saying, when we, we come into here, what makes a property complex?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, this, I think something happened to the slide. Oh, for just a moment.
Certainly.
I apologize, it jumped.
It happens, it happens. So should be, look at, I think number ninety, look at number nine, slide ninety. Okay, then the next one. There, there we go.
Sorry about that, thank you.
No problem, it happens, okay, you can see complex properties in Connecticut. If, John, this is where you were talking about, I believe, or no?
Yeah, but on this first slide here, are we focusing on residential here, so shouldn't it be complex residential properties or no? Because we have complex properties general coming up on slide ninety-five.
Okay, we go, hang on just a second, John, go to one, two, three slides down the road.
No, I see that, I see where we have complex, and the slide on mine is ninety-four, I don't know what we're at now, but I see where we have complex properties general, and then before that we have complex properties residential.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the, the two before that we have, and mine's number ninety-one, where this complex properties, I guess what you're saying is, we're just leaving, okay, alright, I'm okay with it now, I just had to think it through for a minute because reading it first, I just, it looks like we're just focusing on residential.
I think.
With that heading, with that heading.
Like a funnel and starting to work its way down, you know? We talk about complex properties, then the next slide says property can be atypical based on, you know, the half a dozen things that are put there. That's generally speaking, and then we get into the complex reses.
Well, I think we should add in that thing too, we have special purpose property types can be complex too. I mean, you do, you, you know, a hotel can be, I mean, a hospital can be a special purpose property, I just did a transfer station, things like that, should we add something like that? If this is the general part of it right here?
We would, look where we get into it, John, it goes complex properties, alright, I, I, I'm working off a printout, so I guess it'd be ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four. Is that slide ninety-four, it says complex properties general, RCG, that we have commercial mixed-use subdivision industrial?
Yeah.
Yes, that's like ninety-four, Chairman.
I think we're covering it, but maybe I'm missing the boat here.
Well, I mean, you know, a small mom and pop retail, you know, a mixed-use apartment and retail on the bottom, a general subdivision and industrial, are those really complex properties for the generally certified real estate appraiser? No, a general real estate appraiser should be able to handle all those property types by the time they get certified, so I think, this is why I think this is a little too vague, I think it should be a little bit more specific in terms of saying, you know, property can be, RCG certification required to appraise complex commercial property, property can be, I think we should have down there special purpose property type.
We could add another bullet? Is that what you need, or?
Yeah, that's what I need.
Where do you want that to be? Where do you want that to be? On this one that's being shown right now?
After the industrial, say special purpose property type.
Yeah. Special.
Okay, so special purpose property type?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then, then maybe in the notes we can add that, that it might be a time if the, if this instructor needs to slow down or something, that, you know, to have a discussion on what are some special purpose property types, just to get people thinking.
Okay, we jumped a little bit, John, on that, on going back, and I'm asking Linda and Shawna specifically and Norris here, on the complex properties residential, is there anything we need to add or subtract in that arena? Hearing none, I guess we're okay? Or is everyone on mute?
No, I don't see anything.
Okay. Feel free to jump in, because if there's something you want to add or subtract, you, this is, you know, you guys are dealing with this more than I. Okay. So then I guess we then, we'd be at slide ninety-five. Complex properties heading, factors to, we have the what-if. We have, it's kind of a discussion question, and factors with other questions to get, you know, participation. I think we're good there, is there anything to add or subtract? Okay. Then we go, we, next one, ninety-six, I guess, is Q and A, so we're, okay, any, any comments on that section from staff, general public, other members of the commission? Okay, hearing none, or you're on mute, one last time. Alright, then we move to then the appraisal management companies, the AMCs. We go to ninety-eight, slide ninety-eight. Everyone's okay with what we have here, or when you did it before, any comments? Hearing none, we go to slide ninety-nine. Laws for AMC become effective of 2010, national number of AMCs have increased.
Shouldn't we just say laws became, you know, laws are affected, I, I don't know, does it really matter? Doesn't really bother me that it's there, it's just so long ago at this point.
Right, I mean, we could probably.
Take it out?
Take, take out most of that slide, I would just say they, AMC's need to be approved in Connecticut, need to be registered in Connecticut, and that, you know, the part about the National Registry Day.
Okay, Linda and Shawna, if we go to the next slide, does that cover everything that we, that you, you started to go through, must register a state?
Yeah, as I can tell, Linda would know better than me, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, I think we can combine, maybe we can combine these slides, so it's all just one slide.
So would you suggest getting rid of the contact on ninety-nine?
I did, I did.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's one less.
Yeah, they've been around long enough, I think everyone knows they're there.
I agree, we could get rid of that one.
Yeah.
We can get rid of the first two bullets, but, and then the third bullet, just make it one thing, but, oh, do we add in anywhere about how many registered AMC's there are here?
Yeah, I have it at the bottom of the next slide. There's a hundred and forty-eight. So I have it on this slide here, I have a bullet to add to that with the number that we currently have.
So you'll add the bullet, one forty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think as I understood it, you're saying take the last bullet effective 2019 and move it to number one hundred, combined, so to speak.
Yeah, combine the slide to eliminate most of it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good. Now then. I have, I have, in red, mine are marked up, and mine comes onto one oh one, the slide. Oh, let me stop, every, so we're good with a combination ninety-nine and a hundred, are we not?
Yeah.
Okay, not trying to jump ahead too much, one oh one slide, compliance managers must be certified appraisers. Per statute, AMC's must pay the appraiser his or her fee within forty-five days of acceptance of the report. And if I'm a person in the class and I, and I'm not teaching, I'm gonna say, if they do not, then what? Who, what, where, I'm trying to think of a, a student's question.
The next, the next little bulletin, if payment is not received, they can file a complaint.
With the.
They do, yeah, and they have.
How often, okay, how often do you get that, Linda?
Um, I probably get not as much now as when it first started and we changed it to forty-five days, I was getting a lot. And normally I can just send a quick letter or a phone call and they get paid within a week. So, you know, I would, you know, a lot of them, they didn't realize the law had changed, even though they were sent notice. So, not so much anymore.
Okay. Fair enough.
I got a question on this, is that law, that statute, I know it was a change in the statutes, and I, is that statute in our regular statute for licenses, isn't that a separate thing off by itself, shouldn't we reference that in the bottom? Vicky, isn't it?
They are all part of chapter.
Our chapter's four hundred.
Four hundred, thank you, my mind went blank, right, it's, it's all part of it, it's just section twenty, uh, twenty-nine.
Right, that's what I remember, can we just put that in the comments then for the review, for the teacher, in case they have to, somebody asks where is that, they can just reference it?
Okay, as part of notes, yeah, the link or whatever, yeah, or reference, okay.
And on this slide, I also think, because we, I get a lot of phone calls about this, um, a bullet that the AMC can ask you for revisions or corrections, and they may ask you to comment on additional comparables. And because I get people saying, I'm not changing anything, and you know, they have a, a basic typo and they refuse to change it, I'm like, no, they can ask you to do that. So, you know, they can ask you to comment, there's a process if somebody wants to appeal a veil, a value, so they can send comment, comparables, and you can comment why you didn't use them. Just like you would with a lender.
Like any client, if you have an error, you would, you would.
Exactly, or they have, you know, the homeowner has some other comparables and wants to, you know, appeal the value, there's a process, so they can ask you to go back and look at it.
Right, this is getting a little tricky because, in theory, the AMC typically should be the client, but the intended user is the bank, and I think that's where they're getting.
Right, well, it comes from the bank, there's a process normally that if the homeowner, I'm unhappy with the value that you did on the appraisal, I go to my bank, the bank goes to the AMC who then forwards that information to the appraiser. So it is still the bank doing it, but the AMC is the middleman between you and the bank. So they say, we don't like something, you know, what about, why didn't you use the sale right next door to the house that sold two weeks before you did the appraisal? I mean, that's a legitimate question. For many homeowners.
That crosses over to the business side of the fence, Linda, and that is if you're not gonna address, if you've made an error, they're not gonna use you anymore.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's more of a business side of the fence, if you're gonna be that boneheaded, consider that one your last assignment probably for that client.
So maybe we could just put a bullet in here and just, you know, underneath appraisal management companies, maybe we put something in, I'm just testing here to solve this issue, is identify, is the appraisal management company the client? And who the intended user is, or something around client and intended users, and just leave it at that? If you're doing work for AMC's, you know, you need to identify that is the AMC the client? And are there other intended users?
Could it be a new slide that says, do you know, and then we can have those facts that you had indicated about, you know, the bank can ask the appraiser to reassess who the client is and who the intended user are, can we just make that a new slide, Linda?
If you're worried about, if you're worried about enough room, remember we're gonna be combining the next, the previous slides into one, so I think we might have enough room to make.
Okay, so we could take that place.
Ninety-nine, one hundred, and one hundred and one, one, just two slides and add one bullet.
Whatever, if that solves it, great.
Alright, new slide, one oh two, got it, thank you.
Okay. Next one says Q and A, are there any other concerns, edits, comments under the AMC portion? Okay. Hearing none, then we move over to the old, I guess, one oh three, appraisal law continuing education.
It should say continuing, I N G, not continue.
Okay.
Okay, we have, hold on, let me find the right one, I have, I have like four versions of this sitting here, so, um, so Vicky and I have worked on this part because of the changes. And the section that talks about new statutes and regs up at the beginning, we thought it would be a good idea to move this up, so while people are still really paying attention. And put it because it is a new, um, reg, statute, whatever it is, about the changes to the CE.
Okay, hang, hang with me for just a second, one oh three, because I, I'm off of paper, so that's one oh four, one oh five, one oh six. Did you kind of cover this with one oh seven? Continuing education, schooling courses in one oh eight and one oh nine? And we, and Linda, we have your name in there.
Yeah, we.
We're gonna replace it with.
Yeah, we've, we've changed it with new examiner's contact information.
Okay.
So hopefully there will be a new person when this is ready to go to distribute to the schools.
Okay, so I'm looking in here, in this whole section of continuing education, outside of what you want to move, what, where, is it moving a slide or creating a slide?
It is moving the slides.
Which number?
All the continuing ad. And we're moving, gonna move them up to the section at the beginning that talks about, um, statutes, section three, statutes and regulations. This is where we'll talk about changes to any of the changes, and, you know, this is a.
What slide would that be, so we can see it on the screen?
Um, let, let me change it, what, I think what, Linda, if I can interject, Mr. Chairman, I think what Linda is saying is that, I mean, this is the original, right, this is what you decided that we would continue the corrective process or the review process, looking at the very first edition, because that's the one that everyone is reviewing, but of course, many changes, slides, edits have been done in about three different or four different special meetings, what Linda is saying is that she and attorney Bullock have decided that this should go to another section of the presentation altogether, right, Linda?
Correct.
Okay, and, yeah, you, you want to move it, let me see if I can change the view here for a moment to see which slide you might be talking about, you want to move it to which section now?
The, up at the beginning where there was, um, changes to statutes and regs.
Okay, so that starts, that starts with slide number twenty-nine, understanding Connecticut statutes versus regulations.
Yeah, so in this part where we talk about, um, any of the changes that have been made to the statutes and regs, um, because there's been such a major change to the CE statute of having to have it in by January thirty-first.
Okay, so let me just go back to notes pages and I'm gonna scroll up to twenty-nine.
Don't you want that in red? I think you should have put that in red this year.
Okay. So you.
That it has to be done by January.
Yeah, yeah, we, we we have it in like bold and color and, yeah, everything.
You want that right away, I guess.
Right, and that's why we think we should move it up, so it's when, um, people are still, you know, sort of paying attention.
Okay, so you want to move it somewhere in this section?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple.
At, at slide twenty-nine and forward, which would be twenty-nine, um, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Exactly, in there.
Okay.
Before that, we will move it.
Alright, so Linda, you lost me, do you want to move the entire?
CE section, yeah.
To that portion?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, I just, I didn't know where you were going, okay?
Alright, so that's sections, those are slides one oh three, one oh eight, just for reference for you, Mr. Chairman and everyone, okay? So we're back at one oh three.
Alright, so we go through that, we will, like you say, continuing education that Vicky mentioned here. And then we have what? Then we have what we have in one oh four. So I know all this is going to move, but let's, with our working document. We say eighteen hours, we go to one oh five to all licenses. We talk about the use path, the seven hour versus the fifteen hour.
Right.
Then one oh six, what's a provisional? If they take it after May first, twenty twenty-two, great. Then one oh seven, you have continuing education schooling courses and you have broker, salesperson, appraisers, search schools and course. I had a question mark. What were we, what are we trying to convey with this slide?
This is where. A student can look to see if a course is approved.
Okay.
This is the simplest place to look. To see that it's approved.
Okay.
Do we change the heading?
I, I just added a line, look to see if a course is approved and then the link is below. Um, if you see the link there, so maybe we'll put the link up the top and just have a picture, but yeah, we can change that around.
Okay, then bear with me for a second. One oh eight is when we flip over. And Linda, we're going to change that, your name comes out and what we're going to put there?
Whoever the new person is.
I think it's going to be Linda Cafrobita.
Yeah, no, it won't be unfortunately.
And in the la- and, and you know, in the last version, what we'll do, Linda, is a gift to you, we'll give your cell number. So you'll always be remembered in, you know, perpetuity.
The sad thing is half the residential appraisers anyways already have that number, so.
Okay.
Uh, slide one fifty-eight, is that being moved to, to continuing ed? That's the one that says it's got to be three months prior.
Oh, good luck out with you.
Yeah, I mean, we will move any of the continuing ad stuff, so they're all together.
And in that, I, I don't see, maybe I just missed it. What happens if you take a class after January thirty-first and before May first? I'm sure that's going to be a question. Do we have anything with that?
I am still waiting to get clarification from the powers that be and how that's going to be handled. So, but we will have that and we'll have it either as a slide or in the notes exactly what will happen. Because I'm sure there will be a lot of questions on that.
Yeah, so that's definitely would go with slide one fifty-eight wherever that ends up going.
Yeah.
It will definitely need to be part of that.
Exactly.
I know even I, I heard about that during the last law class, so.
Yeah, I just want to make, you know, I have to check with licensing and. See exactly how they're going to handle everything as far as. The audit, obviously it will be audited and then to me if they, my thoughts are if it's not completed at January thirty-first, then it's late.
Okay, we'll get to that later here, okay?
Is that, um, there's a new, um, what's that called, uh? Email address, Linda, right? And make sure we put that on.
Oh yeah, we gotta change, yeah, we, there's a new email address for real estate appraisal, so we'll change, we'll make sure they're all changed.
Oh, on that slide, uh, one oh eight, that's one we're still focused on, right? Shouldn't we just take off Linda's name for now, just so we don't accidentally leave it up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
We have, we put new staff.
We wrote new staff and highlighted it, so we know to change it.
Okay, then on one oh nine, we got to go, did you already change from four hours to three hours?
Yeah, we changed all of those, yeah, we changed all of those.
Okay.
And we changed all the dates.
Okay, so then on one ten, licenses who are not compliant within the. Twenty twenty, would that not be twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, we changed that and we changed the above from May one, twenty twenty-two to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we changed all the dates, okay. Alright. Alright, um. Any, now we get the question, any other things? This is a lot of moving, we've cleaned up, we're going to move this. Is there anything else in continuing education?
The only thing I would like to see, Miami, the only thing I would like to see is I still bugged about that guy who didn't take any education. Came in and we only find him that little bit. Where it says this is reported to the A, ASC. Maybe we, can we add a comment there that says, and your name gets, can get, can get posted and will be. Up for, anybody can look it up that you had a violation.
So it takes, expand what non-compliance being posted to the ASC means.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can put it in the comments or we can put it there, reported, it's reported to the ASC and is posted on the national registry.
Yes.
Okay, we can do that.
For everybody's.
Is it still four hundred dollar penalty?
Yeah, we've been over that, yeah.
Yeah, for this, for this cycle it is, so if you guys, you know, come in twenty twenty-four, if you guys want. To change it, which I know you guys do, you need to probably start in twenty twenty-three sometime to. Get it approved.
Shauna, we got to wait till, what we kind of inferred, we got to wait till the election's over. And then we got to go through that process, so we, we take care of this. You and I are on the same page.
Yeah, I just think.
I think we're on the same page with that, Bob.
Yeah, I, 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 because when you read that slide, it just makes it seem like, well, it's four hundred dollars. We need to have something that says it could be more somewhere down the road, otherwise. You know, they could just say, hey, four hundred dollars, I'll take my chance. So it, when I read that, I said, oh, okay, it's four hundred dollars. You know, to me, four hundred dollars is not a lot of money. Some people might think it's a lot, but, uh, you never know. Like it could be more down the way.
But I think with John's suggestion about saying that it's posted and, you know, you know, we posted to the national registry. I think the combination of that, you know, gives it a little bit more credence, if you will.
Okay. I think, because Shauna, I have it on my notes for January, you know what I mean? Because the election's over, let's put it in then to get, get way ahead of it, you know what I mean?
Right, that's what I need, you know, we need to start much earlier.
And, and then it's done.
Maybe they just should say to a penalty, not put the amount then. If we put no amount, they don't know what it is.
We're subject to just a civil penalty.
So monetary penalty.
Norris, Norris was trying to talk, go ahead.
No, I, I agree with what Shauna says. Don't put it, don't put a number there.
Yeah.
Don't put a number whatsoever, don't, don't even put a number there and just put it like Shauna said, a monetary penalty.
Alright, we can do that, that's not a problem.
Good, anything else with CE? To the general public who may be on, any questions, comments, concerns? Staff, okay. Now, it's the next section under Use Path and I have some notes here. So I don't know what number this is, one eleven, one twelve, I think one thirteen, introduction to Use Path. Go with the next one, okay. It says twenty twenty-two Use Path will be good from as we give the dates. Last week, like last Friday, we could go today. There was something that came out and they're extending it for a year? Am I understanding that correctly?
Someone asked me about that too, and when I looked on the foundation's website. I didn't see anything changed from through twenty twenty-three.
I got an email from the foundation. If you subscribe, there's angels emails.
So reason I didn't get one.
It says that they extended it a year.
John, when you, when you have time and you find that email, can you forward it to me? Do you still have it?
I do have it, I have to find it, yes.
Okay, when you find, no big rush, because I didn't get it for some reason.
We may want to make a star there and just. Make that current, okay, that's.
Yeah.
I, I, I too got an email, like John said, I have to find it. And I, I, you know, was speed reading on the plane, you know, one of those type of things and. Um, I made a note here that. Thinking that you had gotten it, you know, I, you would think that the states, they would let the states know.
Normally I get stuff, Bob, I don't know, maybe they already had me as upon.
Yeah, so. It should say the twenty twenty. Use Path will be good through. The twenty twenty Use Path will still be good from one one twenty-two through twelve thirty-one, twenty-three. And you know what, I, I suspect that going forward, we're going to see more of this, where they're just going to not make many changes and. And keep things and maybe have addendums instead of, uh, revisions of the whole manual.
Right, because otherwise, how are they going to have people take it every year if they don't change anything?
Yeah, well, we're right now in that period where you can suggest changes for the next version.
Right.
So. Um, alright, the five rules of Use Path. I think they're clean. I think one, one fifteen is, oh, again, one fifteen, one sixteen. Is there any, because I asked, did anybody have anything else in Use Path? That you had concerns or issues or changes to?
Alright, we heard a lot that people just wanted the Use Path. Most of it removed and we're trying, if we're trying to make this just the three hours and we're keeping the supervisor stuff. Then I think. Some of the Use Path slides can probably, you know, just maybe just a one or two highlights of Use Path. That are ish, that seem to be issues with people, but I don't think we need to go through all of it.
And that goes back, yeah, Linda, I understand, that goes back to teaching, you don't have to read everything to everyone.
Right.
You, as an instructor, can go through, you, you've had it, you take a seven-hour class every two years. You know, here are basics, I don't care, you can take whatever the balance of folks think. You want to take things out, fine, you want to leave it, fine, I'm open to whatever you folks want to do. Thoughts?
As far as Use Path goes, I think less is best. I mean, everybody sits through Use Path, but it's important to have the things that they do have there. I mean, record, work files, how many times have we seen that as a problem?
Yep.
I mean, but I think where it says, um, you know, the basic rules are and we have the rules. I mean, like you said, everybody sits through the course, has to take it. I don't think we have to have as many slides on it. I think we're going, we're thinking about taking them out.
What if we just had a slide about it, yeah? Recent issues. That the commission has had to. Recent concerns of the commission or something, just talk about work files or something going in a different direction.
Yeah, I think, I think. I think that would be.
And then the submarine?
Yeah, she has two, I think she has two systems going.
Yeah. I'm getting rid of one of them right now.
Okay, Miss Epso, uh, good morning. I just muted, uh, the other system, maybe you can talk now.
Linda?
She looks like she's on mute.
She had two systems open.
Yeah, the one, I mean, just on the screen, it shows the mute button, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, clear.
Perfect, okay. Alright, so now you have to tell me what the question was again, because trying to figure this out, I lost it.
We were trying to maybe eliminate portions of the Use Path slides in here. Uh, because we take, you know, everyone takes the seven-hour Use Path class.
Right.
And John suggested maybe having one slide of, and John, I don't want to put words in your mouth, uh. Recent issues or concerns or whatever with Use Path, am I, John, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I just sent an email to everybody with the appraisal foundations, noticed that it was extended, I just put it up on the.
Okay.
Yeah, instead of, uh, I mean, what, what are our concerns? We want to make sure that this, everybody knows that it's part of our state statute, so therefore you have to abide by it with the one exception. Um, and then, um. Uh, and then just go in and talk about our, you know, I think it's, we have to say that, the, uh. You know, on the ethics, record-keeping, company, scope of work, and jurisprudence, I think we can keep that stuff. Um, and then just go in, instead of going in, into the record keeper rule at each thing, we just maybe have one slide. Talk about, um. I, I don't know, I mean, Sean is right, I mean, our issue has been this. This, this record-keeping. Rule and, and showing up in the work file.
Right, the record-keeping and. I have gotten. I'd say in the, in the last. Six months to a year, a lot of questions, especially from residential appraisers about. They've asked me to do this, how do I do it? Well, if you're not competent and don't know how to do it, then you shouldn't do it. So I think, you know, maybe a little bit of a discussion on competency, that if you're not sure if you can do it.
That's really such a struggle though for appraisers, because how do they move on?
Well, they have to become competent, they have to.
Right, but I mean, there's, there's no process and the process should be discussed on how this happens.
Well, that's not true, Linda, I mean, Use Path talks about, you know, lining up with somebody who's done it before, have maybe had someone review your work.
You're right.
Or actually just telling the client, I, I've done that recently, I had a special purpose property type and it happened to be one that I've done. The properties that, that are similar below it and on the other side of it, but never that one, and I let the client know that. You know, I've done this and I've done this, but I've never done specifically this, but this is what I'm going to do if I get, to get awarded the assignment. That didn't get the assignment, but.
Right, but, but what I'm saying though is that most appraisers don't know about that step. And they go ahead and try to do it anyway, because they want the money, especially on the residential side. And that, we have a policy that I've always used, and if somebody's got, like, we had, um. A house up in the northeast corner of the state, it was like six thousand square feet on twenty-five acres of land or something like that, and the appraiser just, there's no way. That she could handle it, so I went with her, because I've done them. So I went with her and walked her through all the steps so that she could learn how to do it and what was important. But there's not a lot of ways that a, a single appraiser, especially residential, working on their own, can get that person to be able to help them. So they end up having to. Do the appraisal that they're not qualified to do, or they lose the money. So there has to be something that should tell them, how, how, how you're going to do this.
Well, this goes back to the business thing, you know, we don't want to cross the line on the business part of it, but maybe what, maybe the way they handle this is. Maybe we, uh, one option would be to, maybe we just list underneath ethics, what have been the ethical issues that we've. Seen as a commission or Linda has seen, what have been the record keeper rules that we have seen and maybe just put a, a couple of quick comments. Instead of preaching Use Path and telling them how to do Use Path, we're just focusing instead on the issues that are coming before the commissioner have come before the commission. Not just recently, but in, in years past, uh, for instance, ethics, we could put a little comment. Not taking your continuing education and say you did is an ethics issue, you know? Uh, record-keeping rules, showing up for, uh, uh, experience, uh, credits when you're, I mean, when you're, you know, sponsoring somebody. And not make, not having a complete work file or an adequate work file. Uh, and then competency, we have another thing, scope of work is a little bit different, you know, that, I don't know, I don't think we've had many issues on scope of work, have we, Linda?
No, I just, you know, they'll say, if somebody will ask me something and I'm like, well, what does the scope of work say? And then you have to agree whether you agree with that scope of work, because you're the one who makes that determination of whether it's sufficient.
Uh, so maybe we just make a comment that, you know, complaints have come in and. It, it, probably a, a, a more detailed scope of work could, could have resolved the issue or something like that. could have resolved the issue or something like that, I know we're walking a fine line, because we don't wanna say that, hey, we, we dealt with something we didn't deal with, or.
Right, but you know, yeah, okay.
It's just an option.
Okay, so this is part of a line item on that, on that one page, John, is that what you?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, I don't think we need to put the jurisdictional exception up here, because tha- that really is an issues that come to us. I mean, the only jurisdictional exception we dealt with really has been when we changed the regulation, but that's different. And then the Willabrader case that, that was brought before us.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need the jurisdictional exception here, because we're not preaching, we're not teaching use path, and we really haven't had any issues with that.
Okay.
I, I don't take my word, you guys discuss it, tell me what you think.
Are people okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Shauna? Norris?
I'm good.
Okay, now that said, Vicky had asked me and Linda to look into a slide pertaining to jurisdictional exception, we've talked about this. And I'm actually, you know, the left side and my right side of my brain have been playing tennis, going back and forth, trying to, and they haven't dropped the ball yet. Trying to figure out if it's really necessary or not to do that, and I know. I mentioned that, that we should be talking about, perhaps talking about specific cases, so I think in this section, I think we could add in the next slide or the slide after, after we go into record keeping rule. We could just say, just have a separate slide about if we decide to include it of jurisdictional exceptions, and then just talk about the cases and stuff like that. I'm just not sure if it's really our job to teach that, to talk about that. I'm still on the fence.
Don't we beat the lip, don't we beat it like an old horse in use path?
Yeah, we do, that's why I'm thinking that it's not. It's not here, the only thing, I, the only reason why I was thinking about it originally is that appraiser should, you know, should be responsible for case law, but that isn't really our job as a commission to be.
That's right.
Teaching that, that should be coming from somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys don't feel it's necessary, then, I mean, the less slides, the better, so.
Yeah, I just don't think it, I mean, if we're gonna do that, I mean, that'd be something that, you know, I could do separately, I don't wanna say too loud, because I know Jackie's listening. But in a separate two hour seminar, or something like that, that could get the word out to this. To, but, but I don't think it's our job to, to go there.
All set.
Okay, moving forward to the use path record keeping case study. Do you wanna keep it in place, is that where you, you're good with it?
No, I think. I think. The, that record keeping case, and I'm looking at it, I mean, it's older, we've already used it, they've already had this record keeping case, because they took this previous course. So I think the notes that I had was that we were going to focus more so on competency and talk about the hybrid appraisal, desktop appraisal, and not do so much with the record keeping and take that particular case study out, because it's a case study that was already previously used, so we're like, okay, we're gonna still talk about the, whatever the Smith case, or whatever the case was. So no, so we had decided not to use the case study and to use more relevant information under competency with the hybrid and the desktop appraisal, I think, right, Linda?
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, then, we've taken care of that, it, we all, we all are on the same page, commission members. Okay.
Yeah, I'm on that page, I think.
So we sound good, all right, now we move then into the use path competency portion. Since everyone reviewed this beforehand, or I asked, are there any thoughts or changes in this section under the use path competency slides and case study? The floor is open. Leave as is?
Um, you know what, I'm the case study file itself, 119 I have. Maybe we can just, instead of just making this a case study, because that's what we're trying to convey, that, hey, this is an issue, and this is what came up. Then maybe we don't use it as a case study, maybe we just bring it up here underneath the, we have the record keeping rule, and then we have the work file. And we include that as those two slides together. As an example or something, or maybe even in the notes, underneath the work file on 117 and in the notes to the instructor, we can put that in, so it gives the instructor something to talk about.
Okay, so under the record keeping, that case study, you want to put it in the notes?
Yeah, we don't have to put, yeah, just to, you know, this, so that. Yeah, something in there, just to give an example, so that the, the instructor has an example, someone starts saying to him, you know, have they. Because you know, the funny thing about these work files is in talking to different people, what they keep in, what one, one appraiser keeps in the file is different than another person keeps in the file, and then I realized that some appraisers that work for corporations, you know, they have, maybe have some other things to consider too, so. I think it might be prudent, just to put something in there, so that the instructor can actually, instead of cruising through this, can actually stop, pause, and has something to talk about.
Okay, very good. So the all case studies were, will be moved to the notes, so we're not deleting them, we're just moving them.
Yeah, just summarize them, yeah.
That's fair, very good, gotcha.
That, that makes sense, everybody, I mean.
I think it's a good idea, I mean, that's just my thought.
Okay, let's move now to the competency again. Any changes, suggestions, additions, deletions?
We're on 122 now, right?
Yes, thereabouts, or it says appraisal law, use path competency, yes. Anything in that entire section, 122, 123, 124? When you guys prepared, did you have anything to add or subtract?
Could probably talk on that topic all day.
Do you wanna leave it all as is?
Well, I think, as I understood it, I thought it was a good idea what John has suggested about taking this particular case study, move it to the notes, because it's already been used, if you will. And we had talked about adding the desktop and hybrid appraisal to this section, Linda, is that right, this is where we're gonna put it, competency or no?
I don't, I don't know if they want, but it's not really use path, but I mean, so, but it is, you know.
That, that comes later.
Okay, that's fair.
Those things come under, and we'll see new issues.
That's it, all right, then that's fine. So the only, only suggested change here would be taking the case study, moving it to notes, although we're not deleting it.
I agree. Is that okay with folks? Shauna, Norris, Linda, John?
I think so, it's all right.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Now we get into one of the newer is the fair lending. Help me with what slide number, go ahead, yeah, fair lending, the next one, next slide, please, thank you, what number slide is that, so I can mark on mine?
132, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. When you look at 132, 133, you know, on your, your, your work notes. And then we have another case study, does the, the case study then go into our notes again, but was there anything to add or subtract or edit under the fair lending side? This is a, an increasing.
You know, I just wanna say, Jerry, so, Vicky, you were on that seminar, anybody else, Jerry, you were on there for an hour.
Yeah, I was there about 40 minutes, John.
Yeah, so there were, they, they came out with a publication, and I got the emails, and I was gonna follow up, my office manager doesn't come until next Tuesday, so I'm not gonna do it next Tuesday. Follow up with their publication that they came out, that I think it might be prudent that we either. We can go through that, a couple of us can go through that publication, and then decide that this, there might be some issues in here that we should address as a commission, if not in the law module, but maybe in a, one of our meetings. But one of the, regarding this slide, these two slides, one of the things that came up that might wanna go in the notes, and that we might wanna add later after we research it, was one of the appraisers mentioned about, basically it boils down to geo competency. And, and I, I think we should have something in these two slides talking about geo competency, whether it be in the, the competency section or here. Talking about it too, because it seems to be that the problems that are arising of this are because of the appraisers coming in and, you know, just looking for the comps, you know, in an immediate thing, and not understanding the dynamics of individual neighborhoods. And we have that here in Connecticut, if you look at New Haven, Manchester, Manchester actually has neighborhoods delineated. Hartford has, I think, what, 17 or 19 neighborhoods delineated. I think it might be prudent to, to put something in here about geo competency. But we might wanna wait, I know we're pressed for time, but this appraiser was talking about, instead of looking, starting with location, did you catch that part of the seminar? It started, starting with location, you start selecting all the comps in your area, and it around that are similar. Meaning all the, if you got two bedroom apartment units or whatever, and then you create a chart showing all these attributes of it. And then from there, you select where your subject is, and then you kinda create your your selection of area that you're coming from, and you include that as part of your work file. Which I thought was, was fascinating, because it's a different way of thinking than we've actually been trained as appraisers to think, or let's just say, have evolved as appraisers, how we think. You know, through the evolution of being an appraiser.
Okay, so my thought is, John, since you have already determined, and I think we are in agreement, that the jurisdictional exception doesn't have to be done, perhaps you wanna take on this?
Yeah, all I'm saying is, I think we should read that book, and I think that guy talked about this, because he had some slides up on it, and that they're making that slide presentation available. And that might be something that we can include, the only reason why I'm hesitant is he did make one slight comment about, we're still looking into, I didn't really catch what he said, but it sounded like it's still an opinion, not a methodology yet or anything like that, so I don't want us to be preaching an opinion as a methodology when that's not our job.
Okay, so could this be a trend, should this, could this be under the trend?
That's exactly right, Vicky, where I had my notes for said, John, to add on, that's later in the thing with trends here, and I think to be careful is that I think it would be good if we have, if, when they give you that link, that we can send people that link. Because it's exactly what you were saying, John, it's, it's an opinion here, not a, not a, it's in a gray area, let's, let's call it what it is. It's an important item that people, if we've gotta come to grips with it here, but I think it's the new trend here, and that's the place to really pop it out, you know what I mean?
Yeah, now Linda had said in one of our previous meetings that we haven't had any case, any, any complaints that came in indicating any kind of redlining or anything like that. But, you know, now that it's becoming more, you know, talked about, it may be that, that is going on, and we may, you know, have more cases. So I think it might be a prudent, maybe in the, like you just said, that's probably a good idea, just put it there, but I think we need to be just a little careful on.
Yep.
Well, I just, I also just wanted to say, in terms of fair lending itself, one of the things, even though the complaints may come in. You know, we would have them also reach out to, like, you know, their realtor, or, you know, the board of realtors to say, you know, this is a, you know, complaint that I have against the individual person or whatever, so it's not necessarily under our purview per se, you know, so it's a I don't, I don't know that necessarily the department would handle that specific issue, I can put it that, I can put it that way. It's, it's more like the CHRO thing, the commission on, you know. Human, you know.
Okay.
CHRO, it's under C.
Yeah, so that's why I think the only thing we should really be talking about is geo competency, because you know, and then maybe just kinda mentioned it, and then, and then the notes, the instructor can have, you know, cop, have a discussion on what is geo competency and do we actually have it defined anywhere, does anybody define it? It's a term that's constantly used, but I don't know if it's.
No one has defined it, John, because it's a very hot topic. They really have gotten into it, and I, I'm living with this, everything he was saying, we already have done it, because we're a specialty type of arena. You know, location is one thing, but there's only, there's only so many hospitals, you know, there's only so many cancer centers. And so it's one thing for location, but location is one of the last things we look at, to be candid with you, you know, it's.
And he talked about that.
Yep, it's, it's the world I've been living in, but it's a, what you're saying is, you, no one can agree on it right now, because it's it's, it's not a methodology, yes, it's a trend. And that's where I thought where that new trends, I made a lot of notes here, that, you know, where your area of, what I mean, your class that you had, you know, I could only jump on for 45 minutes or thereabouts.
Yeah, but what, what attracted me to this class was, you know, I get things periodically, but I, I was surprised that there was, you know, the ASA, the appraisal foundation, everybody was kinda promoting this, so it's a reality, I don't wanna say reality, it's, it's an issue. And I think we should try to incorporate it somehow, but I think we need to just pause and just you know, it may be the type of thing that we don't add here now and rush, we just maybe discuss it a little bit more, and, and bat it around before we end up. I guess saying, I'm trying to say is, say something that may not be appropriate, or may not be applicable, or that, you know, we actually open up a can of worms that really doesn't exist, you know? Because we don't have the complaints coming in, you know?
That's where the, that's where it comes into the new trends, I thought, you know, this is what's going on.
Okay.
Can we do the same thing with a case study, I'm looking, we got 20 minutes, folks. Well, okay, case study, does that go into the notes as well, under the fair lending facts?
That one would, that, that old case would, but I did have something here that talked about, that I just have the acronym CLEAR, I'm not certain if there's something we should be taking from CLEAR. C L E A R, I don't know what that is. Was that, I think that was, I think that was a study, and I think there was a case, it was a Connecticut case. I'll look into it more, I remember there being a Connecticut case from CLEAR, wherever CLEAR was, some, something that I read, and I'll put it together, and if it's useful, it's fine, if not, then.
Yeah, there was the news article, I don't think it was a case, I think it was just a news article where the gentleman was commenting that that had happened to him here in Connecticut, but we didn't, we didn't have any information on it.
Okay, that's fine, okay, maybe there's nothing, okay, that's fine, I have a question mark, okay, very good.
So then that brings us now to enforcements. We have those, one, two, three, four, five, you know, violations, life cycle of a complaint, so on and so forth, are there any additions, subtractions, edits? Anything that, when you went through, that you made notes to you wanted to bring to the table to discuss?
Well, appeal is felt wrong, but other than that.
And enforcement should be enforcement, singular, not enforcement with an S. All right, well, let me say, there's some inconsistencies between, they say type of enforcement, and then it says enforcement, so we'll, we'll decide on which one, but the. I might put enforcement.
Okay.
On the first one, on the actual, I think it's, it might be singular, but we'll see, we'll check.
Linda's appso, you. Linda said so, you, you were saying something and I'm sorry, it didn't come through clear on my end.
Just that the word appeal is spelt wrong, that's all, I just noticed that.
Okay, with complaint lifecycle?
Oh, I'm just thinking on, on slide one forty, where we have appraisal enforcement. On the last bullet, we have, we, you know, we wrote the license and report to AC, shouldn't they be two separate things? Because we can do one or the other.
That was required, but. If you, if you revoke, it must be reported. Anything beyond the letter of caution has to be reported to the ASC, to the ASC. So it's not, you know, we don't have the option to do it, if there's a revocation, it has to be reported, anything beyond a letter of caution. So it's a continuous motion if you.
Anything else? Leave what we have here. Okay, do you want the K, okay, the case study on hearings? Is that notes as well?
I will put that as notes only because of, you know, it's an old one.
All right. Anything from the public on this section? Or staff, members of the commission?
Can I just say one thing, I don't remember if you guys remember that case in which the guy came and he said he had done the study. And he had gone in and he had done a visual and then we said. Well, how did that happen when the shades were down? Cause he took a picture of it, do you remember that?
Yeah, years ago.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was a while ago, that's why I said we can use a different case study and just move this to notes, but anyway, thank you, sorry.
It's all right. I'm navigating the DCP website, I am all ears. Is there updates needed? Are we current? Is there changes? I, this is an area you have to tell me, I am, I'm a fish out of water when it comes to this.
I have to defer to Linda on this because she works directly with. The licensing services department, if you will, and it's my understanding that they have dedicated staff. To do all of the website. Updates relative to each individual area. Where we are in terms of real estate appraisal, I don't know, I, I, I can't say that, I can't say with. Knowledge, competency.
So, uh, this is Ms. Burtson speaking, Commissioner, so I am responsible as the board coordinator. To do some web administration. For the boards, just general information, agenda, board meetings, that kind of thing. It may fall under operations now and or as Attorney Bullock has stated. They may have a dead, designated, dedicated person or personnel. That will do some web administration or employ IT help desk. To assist with any changes with this, I certainly can look at it as a review because I'm doing quite a bit of web administration for the boards. I've been doing that for a couple of months, okay, but if there's anything here that does not look. Appropriate and or needs a review, you know, it would probably be good to. For the commissioners to actually review it with someone from licensing, probably Mr. Elliott or his designee, what have you. To see if something needs to be taken away or changed, that kind of thing.
Or is there anything when you look, when you look at this that you think needs to be changed, as you've been. You've got a couple of months of explore, or if not more, I'm not, you know, it, we, we, based on your experience, do we look okay, what we have here?
It looks, uh, uh, one of the things that I'm doing, commissioners, is just trying to, with the director of operations is. Just trying to streamline things to make everything look, this is a military term, dress right, dress, right? You know, all boards have some kind of supplemental information that they want to provide. If, if, if I'm looking at this page right now, it looks kind of busy, right? You know, view approved courses, I think that's, that's a good hyper, uh, hyperlink section. But if I click on that hyperlink, what will it lead to? So I certainly can review that myself to make sure hyperlinks are working, that's a critical piece. I can tell you that for sure, you know, people should know that the information that is linked is current and accurate. To the programming that's coming out of this board. Most popular, I don't think that that may necessarily be necessary, right? Either it's one or the other, right? You, you either want persons to be directed to the page. That is the hyperlinks that are most popular in terms of what they need access to right away. Right? Quick access is another terminology, but most popular is fine. A lot of this information also may be somewhat linked to SOTS, to the Secretary of State's office, so I do need to do that review as well. I've not looked directly at this page, but I'll certainly make a note of it. And then bring any comments to you, Jerry, and then you can decide whether or not it should be an agenda item. For the regularly scheduled board meeting, okay, I can do that.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
We welcome your input.
Thank you.
Okay. Folks, now I wanted to make sure we had the adequate time here, is the new trends. This is where so, you know, and John, we can pick up where you were at, but we have. Nationally, we go through here, we have seven bullets. Replacing licensing affairs, you know, appraisers is concerned, you can let your eyes do the walking. This is where I think it's open for discussion, you want. Edit, take something out, you want to make additions. This is, this is our time right here, folks, so have at it. The floor is open.
Well, the one that says, um, the two thousand twenty four, the public act, about the three months prior, we've already addressed that. We moved that up to the education section, right?
I have a problem with the first one, I think we should just take that out. Replacing licensed, licensed appraisers is a concern, I know that came up in that thing, but. And I know there's a couple of people around, they're pushing, you know, going to, uh, you know. Statistics and things like that instead of using, but I think with what's, we saw going for the fallout of Zillow and stuff like that. Licensing is here to stay, so I don't think it's going to go away, so I, I think we, I don't think we should even bring that. That concern up, that's, that's an opinion thing, that's not something that should come from us, that's my opinion.
But aren't you concerned about the fact that there's a shortage of appraisers?
Well, that's a different issue, that's not.
Residential appraisers are aging out, I don't know anybody that's under sixty. A couple of the people that work for me that are much younger, but I mean. So I, I took this as to mean replacing licensed appraisers is a concern because your appraisers are aging out and people aren't coming into the business, it takes.
Well, that's a different thing than saying replacing licensed appraisers. Because, you know, the way I read that is, you know, you're getting rid of the licensing for appraisers. I mean, I, I think you, we might want to rephrase that and say, you know. We got the Pyria program, which is, should be in there, new trends. You know, attracting new appraisers to the industry.
What do you want to say? What do you want number one to say?
Well, when I read this, that my concern was, are these our opinions or are these something the commission should even be concerned with? Nationally, there are several trends and I think the, the major one is, is attracting appraisers to the industry. And getting over the barrier of, the, the barriers of, of, the barriers of entry, the barriers of, help me out here, Jerry. I'm stumbling for words, the barrier of entry, basically. And, uh, you know, and now we have, you know, the Pyria program is a test model, it's in the testing phases. To, uh, which I think we're going to talk about a little bit, but I think that's, I think we need to rephrase that.
Okay, so attracting appraisers to the industry and eliminating barriers of entry.
No, not eliminating. Cause we, we still need barriers to entry, we can't water us down, then we ruin the public trust.
What are you, okay, so what do you, okay, we, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to write what you said, attracting appraisers to the industry.
That's it, just said it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, thank you. All right, that's number one, number two?
Are we okay with that? I- is that what I'm following you, Vicki, number two on the?
No, no, I'm saying number one was attracting appraisers to the industry, period, that was the end of that, I'm saying, let's go, whatever we want down on this. Because the thing for Connecticut is number seven, we had the national trend and then we had in Connecticut as a separate, you know. Enter your line.
All right, so on the second one though, aren't we referring to education changes, instead of changes to the licensing requirements? It's changing to the education requirements of licensing are having some effect, correct?
Are you talking about nationally or you talking about Connecticut? Cause number.
Nationally, everybody had to change the, the educational update.
Okay, so what do you want me to say, changes to the, I'm sorry?
Educational requirements.
Okay, educational, uh huh.
Of licensing. Is having some impact.
Okay, all right, that's very good, thank you.
What about this fees thing? I, I'm not, this is new to me, I, I, where, where is this coming from? Am I missing something? I've just always told not to talk about fees, when we were going through all the AMC legislation and the law.
This is national, one through six is national, number seven is Connecticut.
No, I understand that, but. Is there something?
Well, I think, I think that it used to be that, there was like a. A mindset that said the fee is. This and it was always that, now the fees are all over the place, even on the residential side.
I don't think, I don't think we need that.
Knock it out, took it out, redacted, thank you.
So we've taken out one, or we've changed one, we've taken out four. Number seven in Connecticut detrimental property conditions, notes, mold and so forth. Are there any other major issues that go off of that?
I, I mean, I don't know, is the Crumley Foundation issue still an issue? That was years ago.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it's big out in.
You're in eastern Connecticut, it's huge.
Okay.
There's a link, we'll provide the link to the Department of Housing because that is under the Department of Housing's, um, I'll say.
That's really good, okay. On the western side of the state, we really don't have anything like that.
What's this, number six, big data is not a threat, I can see. The appraisers in the class going, jumping up and down over that.
Saying, yes, it is.
Well, because when I, when I, when it says big data, I'm thinking like services like CoStar and places like that. And one of the issues is a lot of appraisers just can't afford that, I mean, I, I subscribe to it, I subscribe. But I just got put on the plate that I had to go to a national thing. Or reduce my area, that wasn't going to solve me, so the, you know, the, it's a, so I'm paying for it, but I know a lot of my peers can't afford to pay for that. So why are we saying big data is not a threat? Why are we saying that?
Well, I don't know, if you go up with the notes, all of this stuff that was taken from the national trend, wherever it came from, and it came off, I probably should have had the link. But wherever it came from, the notes, um, address whatever the thing is. Like number one underneath you see, number one of replacing, you know, licensed appraisers is a concern. Whatever the, the trend was, the notes are underneath of it, so whatever number six is, if we go to wherever it is, it's somewhere. The notes from. That statement are provided, I don't want to interpret what it is. Is it the next one, is it below this? I don't know. No, I can't, so.
Yeah, I, I think we need, I, I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with that because I know all the issues would. You know, if you've been following a little bit of the Zillow thing, which I haven't been following too detailed, but. I mean, um. I think we, I don't think we should go there.
Okay, take, it was national, but I can take it out, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I, I get worried about certain things here across the line, one is talking on fees. And this isn't, you know, an area that, that Zillow case is really.
Okay, you just had it, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, and you just had it when you were. Scrolling, you, you would come across and I thought you had that information as to the specifics on each of the things. I'll take it out, I don't have a problem with that, but I was just wanting to see where it was in the notes, what they were saying in the notes.
Okay, here we go, Attorney Bullock, let me. Certainly, so here it is here.
So number six, what was, um, fee, that's what they were saying about fees, that's what the national trend was.
Okay, but here's, here's number six.
Here's number six, okay, can we just read that for a minute and. Is where, I don't know where it came from, that's, that's something else, but go ahead, number six, that's what, that's what this was being referenced to.
I'm happy to read it, can everyone see it?
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean.
Oh, sorry, I, I was trying to make.
I understand what that note is saying.
I can take it out, not a problem. We'll take it out, not a problem, not a problem, very good, done.
There we go.
Maybe we should just put a number up there that says other.
There it is.
I mean, I think it's something positive, must be a state.
Problem is it becomes really expensive. And, I don't, well, I, being residential, I think. I'm not sure I need to know about the whole country, I just need to know about the area I'm appraising, so, I don't know.
Somebody might want to go somewhere else and do something else.
I think the word big data is a trigger. You know, so if it, so if it, if we put something else in there too. Like, um, just saying data sources or something like that, that's not.
Data sources are not a threat?
Somebody's taking, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying no, because we're, you know, that's a, still up for debate. And I think we're taking a side by saying that, and I don't think we should be doing that.
I'll take it out.
That's my opinion, you guys want to leave it and that's your.
No, it's out, I think, I don't think people, you know, have an opinion one way or another, so out is okay, it's all right, fine. So four is out and six is out.
Is there anything to be added to new trends?
Well, this is where I had asked if we wanted to put something about the hybrid, I'm not sure if that's still.
I think you were good to have it on the next section, you know what I mean, the next page?
Okay, so that was it, that was the only thing you were saying.
I think that the, if, for those who are teaching this class, you, you, right there is twenty minutes, you know, because. People can get really, you know, rightly so, wound up. And I think keeping it generic is the right way to attack it. You know, and they're here, they're growing, they may be gone. They may be, you know, morph into something else, but I think it's correct doing it at a. I call it the ten thousand foot level, you know, and.
You know. For a while during COVID, we did these, mostly just to see what was going on. And one of the things that really bothered me is that they did have somebody inspect the property, but the. Qualifications of the person who inspected the property were never defined, it could be, you know. Your uncle, it, it didn't have to be somebody who was, you would expect it to be some kind of a building inspector or an appraiser trainee, something like that. But it's not, and. That to me, that's kind of scary, that you. that to me, that's kind of scary, that you are now asked as an appraiser to take information from somebody who hasn't got a clue. So we stopped doing them. And I gave them a lecture on why I thought they were wrong, but I don't know. I I there's there's not a real process that's defined that says that, you know, if somebody who's looking at the property has to have some kind of qualifications. So I don't think we should, either we should have a standard that says in the state of Connecticut, if you're going to do the hybrids, then the person who does the inspection has to have one, two, and three, and the person who's doing the appraisal gathering has to be a certified appraiser. But I don't know that that could ever happen, but anyway. I think there's going to be ten minutes of moaning and groaning over this, but other than that.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments? You want to keep it in there, that slide?
I think we should keep the waivers and hybrids in there. I don't know where the waivers comes from, but the hybrids. Yes, I know, on the, go ahead. I'm sorry, Linda.
The waivers are the bank waivers, where the bank will decide, though, the risk is not enough, so they don't bother with the appraisal.
Because of the diminished level. The the, I do know, I just did a commercial, I had a commercial appraiser from out of state. I looked him up. He was reputable. And he was doing a HUD rental survey that he's done many times, which he can do from his desk. But he needed someone to re-inspect the property. And all he asked me to do was to go take photos.
Right.
You know, and so, but he was trying to find someone who had experience with that, doing these things and appraising. So I mean, it's, I think it's going to keep happening and it's evolving. It's here, it's going to spread. I think we should address it. I I'm really looking forward to going to slide one fifty-seven here on this.
I don't, I don't think we're ever going to get rid of it because it's there and it's huge. But I I wish there was ways to put some kind of responsibility on the people that are involved in it.
Okay, I need to interject right now. We are one minute after ten. Are we allowed to go another five minutes on this system?
As far as I know, Commissioner, yes.
Okay, all right, folks, do you have, can we, everyone available for another five minutes to try to wrap this up?
Sure.
Okay. We get into, if hearing no objections, we'll keep moving Connecticut trends with Pyria, era, excuse me. I think it's good to have it there as we still work through this. And it's not bad to hear as a discussion point of, I think this is where you're going to get most class participation with new trends, waivers and hybrids, Connecticut trends, and then also what's coming up in twenty twenty-four. But with, let me not get ahead. Anything we want to add or subtract with era?
I just think in the notes, we should tell the instructor that the commission has been actively following this or and has had, you know, meetings addressing this and is, you know, following, looking at how other states are handling this. And then kind of just leave it at that or something. Because, you know, we we saw how California has jumped one way, and now they're thinking about going another way, that kind of thing from that conference we had. So I I just think, I think we should be some, some, a little bit more information in there for the instructor to just clarify what, why we aren't doing anything. That that line is says Connecticut has yet to determine whether to adopt area as an alternative pathway.
John, I wasn't following. Do you want to add to this or?
Well, I'm wondering if we should refa- rephrase that and just say the Connecticut Real Estate Commission, Real Estate Appraisal Commission is 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 acting actively, actively monitoring the Pyria as, the Pyria as an alternative path, as an alternative education pathway or something like that.
Okay, so the Connecticut Real Estate Commission is active, Appraisal Commission is actively monitoring Korea as an alternative educational pathway.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine. In the notes, of course.
No, I don't know if we should even change it in that slide because that slide, and just leave it there and that, and you know, in the notes, I don't think you really, I I said, no, I know I said notes, but the notes thing is, you know, this is, this is continuing to evolve. And maybe we don't have to discuss that here. Maybe Vicki and I could discuss that since, and maybe talk about what goes in the notes and then review it. But I do think it should say Connecticut, what we, what you just said, Vicki should, instead of Connecticut has yet to determine whether to adopt Pyria as an alternative pathway. So the Connecticut, the Real Estate Appraisal Commission is considering.
Okay, I'm going to put this Connecticut Real Estate Appraisal Commission is actively monitoring Korea as an alternative educational pathway. My change is to that.
Is that fair, Jerry?
Yeah, I think we're fine, you know, because this is evolving and I I think this topic, I think the fines, and I think our next slide are huge that we, as a commission, assuming we're all still here in January, are going to have to really dedicate a fair amount of time to bring this to fruition. Okay, where we want to do with that, because I know with the election, I'm just calling what it is. You know, it gets to be a little bit of a sticky point and things, you know, qualifying it out. What we're looking at with the fines that we've discussed, you know, and start that process. And then, but I think they all kind of go dovetail with the next slide coming in twenty twenty-four. You know, the DCP license, three months prior, the question was presented an hour, forty-five minutes ago, whatever. What do we do if they don't have their CE done by, you know, January thirty-first, you know? And that Linda had brought up, and I think these are topics that we, it it we're evolving, we're growing and so forth. So what we put today in August, you know, I think we keep it generic here as as we have it here, but boy, when we get to, when whoever's teaching this, and let's call it what it is, you know, it will become, you know, in a year from now, a year and a half from now, when people start to take these classes, we're going to be really into, we're going to have these flushed out, and I really think those are the three big things as of right now that we're going to have to deal with. And I get how politics plays into play here, and that's why I keep saying January. If the balance of the commission would like to start to attack it now, you know, come September, October, November, great. I have no, I I'm not concerned about it. I'm not worried about it. I'm not saying it's January, nothing until January, but that's just, I know I just ramble and I apologize and I digress, but I see that's how it's all being tied together. Thoughts? Nothing? Okay.
No, I think you're on point.
Is there anything else to add with Connecticut trends and or coming in twenty twenty-four that we want to flush out right now?
Just the slide that Vicki, I have to get to Vicki and on the the change in the regulations, which were, I'm not sure if that would go here or slide it in somewhere else.
This slide, we also had moved to the section about continuing education. So I thought, as I understand what you're saying, that the consequences may be what to discuss on this slide if we keep it here. But this information is moved up to the continuing education portion. Is that correct, Linda?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can say it again at the end of the class. This is another reminder.
Yeah.
Because I think it's really important that they hear it multiple times.
So your information, John, to answer your question, could go here. It's not a problem. Yes.
Is there anything else to be added or subtracted to the Connecticut Law Class?
Well, the only other question I wanted to ask is, is this the geo competency thing about the location? Is that going to go here also? Not before this Public Act, I mean, as one of the topics to put in here or no? You're taking it out or you don't want to deal with it at this time? I just didn't.
I think we should add it to the competency section. Or the Fair Housing.
When we were, at the time that we were in competency, you said that, I my understanding was that it should be added to trend because we didn't want to take a decision. We didn't want to make this because
I I believe it should be in the trend section.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. So geo competency will be going in trend.
Yeah, it's evolving so much
Right.
that it is truly, if not the biggest trend, it's one of them, you know?
Okay, that's fair. Thank you for that clarification. All right, that was the only other thing I had.
Last thing, anything from the public? Staff? Members of the commission? Okay, oh, okay, and I'll ask one last time, is there anything urgent that has to come before the commission?
I don't have anything. I can't wait to the September meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Vicki, anything to be added from your point?
Well, and honestly, we only can talk about the course, so no.
Okay.
Because this is a special purpose meeting for the course, so that's all we can talk about.
Yeah, but we also know, we we let it, or as we said in the last minute of the meeting, that if there was an urgent matter, since we don't have a regular meeting, since we don't have any
Okay, that's fine, but no, I don't have anything to answer the question. Thank you.
We have nothing urgent before us. Can I get a motion? First of all, thank you for everybody's participation, your patience, your diligence, you're taking time to read, think, listen, all those things are very, very important, and it's been well spent for three of these sessions. And I think it's been well worthwhile, and we're trying to do the right thing, and I believe we have. So again, a big thank you. Enjoy the balance of what we have of the summer left, and we will meet in September, but I need a motion and a second to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just ask, ask one thing? I I don't want to make an issue out of it, but we didn't put where we're putting Shauna's stuff. I just thought about it because I see her and it just reminded me. Where are we putting our, is that going to be a separate course or what was the decision on that? I'm sorry.
Your honor?
I don't know. I I sent you that information. I don't know what you guys talked about as far as that went.
What, yeah, what was, what was the, in terms of where we were going to put it or how we were going to put it or how we're going to?
I don't know if you guys wanted it part of this or not. I don't know where that got left. I did that a couple of weeks ago.
What was it about? I don't I don't know if I got it.
Appraisers assessments.
Oh.
The assessing side. I I sent Jerry a lot of information, somebody else.
I thought, you know, Shauna, we had had a discussion, I think in the first session, lengthy on that, that there was a view that it was really like a, it it's so important to have its own two-hour course.
Yeah, I I heard that at one point. I just don't know what ever happened.
Okay, so is that what we decided that that should be a separate course?
Wait, wait a minute, I don't, talking, I'm sorry, but I don't, like Linda, so I don't think I this isn't coming to me. Can you resend that email to us?
I had sent it to Jerry and to the state, the information that I had, because usually I always speak through the state.
You then send it to us so that we can look at it and see how it
We'll ask for the the state to do that. Okay.
Yes, we have sent it in. All right, we'll get that to you. All right, that's fair.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, ayes?
Aye.
Ayes.
Okay, and we'll look forward to that, and then I want to make sure that that is on the agenda under new business of what, or old business, I don't care which one it goes under technically for Sean's information to be, that it gets discussed in a couple of weeks at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you to make sure everyone's up to snuff and, yeah, we talked about it, you know, now, what, two months ago or whatever it was, but things change, things evolve, and let's not, let's readdress it so we're all up to snuff and on the same page, or if there's anything to be added or subtracted, we do it then. Thank you, folks.
Okay, I'm going to go off and do happy appraising now.
Yeah, I may not be at the next September meeting. We're leaving September second for Europe, and we're gone at least two, two weeks, so I'm not sure that I'll be back for the
Okay.
Okay.
If you have any thoughts or comments, and when that is sent out here, please forward it to the state so then they're, they can let everyone know, we know your opinions and thoughts, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, folks.
Enjoy. Take care, everyone. Be well.
And Randa, thank you for coordinating us. Thank you. Randa, you heard Kat. She did well. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Okay, take care. Bye bye now.
Bye bye now.